All right, I'd like to call this January 16th, 2014 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson?
Present.
Councilwoman Woodford?
Present.
Mayor Swallows?
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps?
Here.
Councilman Albright?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, consider approval of agenda as presented, do we have any changes to the agenda? No changes. For approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held January 2nd, 2014. A motion for approval on the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Okay, item three, consider on second and final reading ordinance 131219, rezoning 440 East Broad Street located in the East Broad Freeze Street Historic Overlay District from RS 10, single-family, to CL local commercial sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the property is depicted on the screen here. Here's some photographs from the street, and as you noted, it's to be rezoned from RS 10 to CL. It's been recommended by the Planning Commission, the planning department has cursed the recommendation, we've had no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I think this is a win for the city and the property owner, so.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, on new business, item four, consider resolution 140101 honoring Scott Chadwell at his retirement. I have a resolution here. Can you hear me out there? Do you not?
Is yours working?
No.
I don't think any of them are working. Okay. They're gonna be loud.
Scott worked.
Whereas with a passion for agriculture and desire to work in the community, Scott Chadwell embarked on a career of service to Putnam County with the local county extension office on August 19th, 1974. Whereas over the years through his love of agriculture, Scott has become a familiar face, helping hand, and friend to many by providing guidance, advice, and leadership to those in Putnam County and the upper boroughs. Standing on call many times for seeking requests for help at home, keeping the same schedule as local farmers, early rise and late bed, always willing and eager to assist, Farm Bureau has Charlie, Cookville and Putnam County has Scott. Whereas Scott has left a lasting impression on local youth sharing a vision for success, cultivating an appreciation of agriculture, and mentoring thousands of students through the local 4H Club programs, as well as playing an integral role in the development of local wildlife judging teams that have enjoyed championship wins at several regional, state, and national levels. Whereas it is not uncommon for former students to remind Scott of their past participation in 4H by sharing their personal success stories and the positive influence he had on their lives, a testament to the impact he has made. Whereas there are many success stories that Scott has been a part of, such as the initiation of our farmer's market, seeing it began in a local church parking lot by his partnership with Cityscape, working tirelessly to see the project come to fruition, and by continuing to be a valuable resource and colleague with the city of Cookville for the market's viability. Whereas Scott was instrumental with implementation of the Putnam County Master Gardeners Club, which under his leadership won the Tennessee Master Gardener Search for Excellence State Award three times in 2010, 2011, and 2013, the Master Gardeners Club continues to share the fruits of their labor with beautiful flower gardens in many locations around Cookeville. Whereas Scott has earned numerous awards and accolades, one of which being the prestigious distinguished agriculture alumnus award from the Agricultural Foundation for Tennessee Technological University, and his portrait now hangs at the Hyderburts Pavilion representing the honor, but Scott will humbly tell you that the greatest reward comes from helping his friends, neighbors, and the community he calls home. Whereas Scott Chadwell will be retiring on January 31st, 2014, and should do so with a sense of pride for a job well done, a difference made in many lives, and bestowing a passion for agriculture and sense of community to future generations, paving the way for future leaders and taking with him lifelong friendships. If you have a question for our Charlie, you will still be able to find him continuing to work at the local stock barn during the feeder calf sale as he's done once a month for many years. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens of the city of Cookeville, sincere congratulations is hereby extended to Scott Chadwell for his achievements and well wishes at his retirement. Now therefore be it further resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office adopted this 16th day of January, 2014.
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, if you would, if you would go forward, we also have a key to the city.
We just wish it worked on Sunday.
You're not allowed to duplicate this.
We'll get one more with families in Tennessee.
Just family. I'll let you guys just do family.
You too, you too. We got it, you're not in there. I'm gonna get you guys on too, okay? One, two. Oh, says cannot report.
I'd just like to say, I really thank everybody, I've had a lot of good relationship here, Melinda, Jim, Gail, Tracy, Rick, we all worked on the farmer's market, and it was something that we'd worked on for a long time and never were really able to get it together, and finally when we did, there's been at least eight or nine other counties that have called me saying, can we have the plans for your farmers market? We understand it, it worked really well, and it has been a lot of problems at times, but the state wanted to come up and do their promotion here, because last year they came up and did their 25th anniversary thing, so I appreciate all the good partnerships we have.
Appreciate you.
I am told that the microphones are working through television, they're just not working in here, so we still need to talk into the microphones.
Scott, the farmer's market is, I mean, that's one of the crown jewels of the city, I do believe, it really is.
I agree.
It brings so many folks into town, so.
I agree.
Okay, on to item five, consider appointments to the Cookville Municipal Planning Commission, sponsors, Mr. James Mills.
Did we get a motion in second on that resolution?
We did not.
Oh, need to back up?
Sorry, I apologize.
I'm sorry, I fell down on my job.
All right, yes ma'am.
I move that we adopt the resolution honoring Scott Chadwell at his retirement.
Second. Any discussion? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item five.
Mayor, council members, we have three members on the Planning Commission whose terms expire this month. The first is Mr. Jim Staffney, who was originally appointed to the Planning Commission in 1998 and serves as our chairman. Jim has agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, we would recommend for his reappointment. Dr. Angelo Volpe, who's served since 2003, has decided that he cannot continue to serve, and also Randy Dalton, who's served since 2008, has asked that he not be reappointed. The planning department recommends for the appointment of Ms. Leslie Sullins to fill Dr. Volpe's position, to fill Mr. Dalton's position, the planning department recommends for the appointment of David Webb. David currently serves as the mayor's representative on the Planning Commission, and it's our understanding that Mayor Swallows has indicated that he would appoint Adam Ryan to replace Mr. Webb as his representative on the Planning Commission, but we make those recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
You guys were so nice to appoint me to the Planning Commission, and I get to work with these people. Jim Staffney is a great asset to the city and doesn't get the credit it deserves, because this is a hard job. Angelo Volpe, for him to be on the Planning Commission at that long is a very dedicated man to our community, and salutations to him. Randy Dalton, he did put a lot of time in. These are people that have volunteered to do these jobs, and they're outstanding that they did this. Plus, we've got some new additions and very well qualified, and like any time we have any of our citizens volunteer to do something we ask them to do, to serve on a committee, we're very appreciative of it.
Cookeville's very fortunate to have a lot of volunteers in our community. It's really good.
This board is probably one that takes the most time, I would think.
Takes quite a bit of time.
Yeah, takes a lot of time, a lot of study. So we just appreciate anybody willing to serve. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item six, consider appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, we have two members on the Board of Zoning Appeals whose terms expire. Sid Gilbreth has served on the Board of Zoning Appeals since 1999, has asked that he be reappointed, we would recommend that he be reappointed, Sid's a great member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Tracy Cody's term also expires, and Tracy no longer wishes to serve, and in his stead or in his replacement, we recommend James Dahl, and so with those two recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Once again, we're grateful when people want to serve.
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
Thank you.
Item seven, consider authorizing the city manager to enter into contract amendment number three with Wiser Consultants relative to Crofton Associates on right-of-way acquisition services for Bennett Road Extension Project, sponsor is Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, this item we have for you tonight is the next step, if you will, in the Bennett Road Extension Project. As you can see by the slide, Crofton Associates is the subcontractor that we have chosen through Wiser Consultants to handle the market study, the appraisals, the review appraisals, as well as negotiations for 39 tracks on the Bennett Road corridor. The proposal is in your packets, and we request your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I've served on a committee when we were trying to decide which engineering consulting firm that we would hire to do this Bennett Road Extension, and Wisner, Wiser stood out for cause of the Crofton Associates, they have such a high reputation in the appraisal negotiation part, and we felt that was going to be very, very important about this extension. The engineering, I thought, was pretty much straightforward, and what we did, we had, what, seven or eight companies, and we had folders, binders to study, and we graded these companies and came back, and we all came to the conclusion that this was the strong part of the wiser engineering consulting, was the ability, the negotiation part of it, and they stood at head and shoulders. So they're the best company that Cookville could contract with to deal with this extension of Bennett Road.
What else? We, it seems like a big number, but when it comes to right-of-way and it being as important, not just to the city, but to the folks that are affected, we wanted to make sure we got it right and hired the best in the business. It's not anything we took lightly, so we wanted to make sure we got it right, somebody who'd been through it before and has done several through the years and comes highly recommended, so I think it's very important that we get this thing right, so. Anything else? No, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Item eight, consider authorizing the city manager to obligate the city of Cookeville's federal surface transportation funds allocation for fiscal year 2014 to the Bennett Road Project, sponsors city manager Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, one of the main reasons that we hired an outside consultant to do the right-of-way acquisition for the Bennett Road is because we're using state grant funds to fund a portion of that road, and you run into a lot of paperwork and a lot of nitpicky requirements, a lot of hoops you have to jump through, so that is why we felt it was really important to hire an outside consultant that's a professional that's done a lot of these things before. And the federal surface transportation funds are allocated by the federal government, usually in six-year cycles, and this is our first year of the next six-year cycle, and our funds are $379,814, and any time you spend surface transportation funds from the federal government, you have to jump through the same hoops that you do with the state grant funds. So it makes perfect sense then to me to just fold this money into that Bennett Road Project to help fund some of that right-of-way acquisition, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I agree with that completely.
Yeah.
But this does not mean that we're not going to be working on roads and resurfacing roads in the city, right?
This has nothing to do with our gasoline tax that we receive from the state of Tennessee that we use to pave streets every year, no.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item nine, consider authorizing the city manager to acquire property by negotiation or eminent domain pursuant to Bennett Road Extension Project, sponsors Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, this is number three in a four-part section we have tonight on steps to prepare. What this will do is authorize the city manager to work with the right-of-way consulting firm and to acquire by negotiation or eminent domain properties relevant to that project.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I do. Melinda, would you do me the favor of kind of walking me through how this would work? Because I think when you utter the word eminent domain, it, ears perk up, it certainly might have quite a bit, and it's been, this has been something that I've been thinking about all week, and I appreciate, and I guess you may want to ask Mr. Shipley to do that, but since you're sponsored, I'm gonna follow the parliamentary procedure.
Either way. I'll be glad to.
How that, just kind of walk me through this, how this would work, especially with the city manager being authorized by this council to do this thing, do this.
Well, it's very common for the city council to authorize the city manager to do this. Now, I have acquired a lot of right-of-way on a lot of road projects over the years, and I don't think I've ever had to use eminent domain. I've been in one eminent domain lawsuit, and that was with some property where the water tank is on Pilot Knock. That was a jury trial, and we got busted in that one, so we don't like eminent domain, it's a very last resort, and like I said, I've negotiated a lot of them, and it's just, it is a tool there, eminent domain is a tool for governments to use for the public good, and to build a street is for the public good, so I can't sit here and tell you that we won't use it, I certainly hope we don't have to. But to walk you through it, the Crofton Associates will meet with the property owners, there will be, Norman Hall will be the appraiser, he's very well respected in the state of Tennessee, and actually throughout the southeast, and now the microphones are working. So she will have a very good appraisal to show the property owners to begin the negotiations. And then she will meet with them a couple of times, she'll come back to me, and we'll talk about money and those kind of things, and it just kind of works back and forth.
I just probably would add to that, that the words eminent domain do have very negative connotations to them. Basically, it just means you can't agree on a price.
Right.
Okay? You're not taking it from someone without reimbursing them, it indicates that you can't agree on a price, and that's when you have the ability to go and have that worked out in the court of law. Also, by authorizing the city manager to do this, it allows us to expedite the project work so that there are 39 tracks involved in this project, and so it allows us to move it at an expeditious pace, which keeps us on track with the interchange, which is a critical part of our funding and our ability to move forward. So it provides an ease, if you will, of process, and again, our goal is to not have to go anywhere near a courtroom in this process.
I didn't realize until I started, you know, I knew Larry showed a concern about this, but in my, I didn't realize it was part of the Fifth Amendment. You know, everybody is very familiar with the First and Second, and usually just associate the Fifth Amendment with self-incrimination, but the last line in that gives the government the right of eminent domain. And I found that surprising, and when the Constitution was written, that they had the foresight to put that in, but it's critical for the use of eminent domain, that it is for the public good, and that they are properly compensated for that land.
Exactly.
And just, well, I'm sorry, I have a follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, whenever others have the opportunity to speak.
Go ahead.
Okay, I felt like I was interrupting somebody. Melinda, just for clarification, would you, in all this process, I mean, talking about what's done, and of course, I appreciate the process, what you've told me about expediting this, there are some times we have to meet in order to be good stewards and show diligence that we are going to continue with this project, and I do appreciate all those things. I guess the one thing that concerns me, and I need help with this, is that Nora and I have heard in this, the city councils, that the city council and our authorities is involved in this process, and this is, I think this is where my concern lies, and I would ask that if you keep, for clarification, if you can help me answer that question.
I can say one thing, that the way this will work is, the city has, the city council, I think, has approved the right-of-way where this property is going to go, and the company that we've hired and Mr. Hall to do the appraisal are going to try to negotiate this price with the owners. If that negotiation fails, then the project can go ahead and be constructed, and the city files an eminent domain proceeding and deposits the amount of money that has been appraised at the property, so the property owner can have that money, and then the city can use that property to go ahead and finish the construction, and then the court just decides what, if any additional money, the property owner might get. But the property owner's not going to be without their property and without any money at any time during the proceeding. So that ameliorates things a little bit, but hopefully we won't have to do eminent domain, and we can negotiate prices, but I was involved in all the eminent domain proceedings from all the way on Bachman Way in Sparta, and all the way on Highway 56 from the interstate into Smithville, and you know, it can be done, but it's, but what Melinda's talking about is the construction schedule is going to have to take place, and one property owner can't hold up the whole project, and that's where the eminent domain comes in. But we do deposit the money in court, and they have their money, and then we just let the court decide if they would be entitled to any additional money.
Does that help?
No. I mean, I really didn't answer my question, I appreciate that, I appreciate hearing about that, again, as myself and the public, I needed to hear that, and I appreciate that very much. But in this entire process, how does the city council stay involved? I mean, all I read on the, and if I'm just reading this literally, it says authorize the city manager to acquire property by negotiation or eminent domain pursuant to the project, and again, something of this importance, I'm just wondering if this elected body, which supposedly represents a citizenry, is involved in that process? And I think I know the answer.
Well, you are actively engaged in it right now as we speak. And in my past experience with issues, I think the city manager has engaged the council daily and would per parcel, per everything. What this eliminates is having to come back to the city council on every single parcel for a price or, you know, negotiations like that to take place. So that's, you know, again, if that's something you all feel needs to happen, then that you would vote accordingly, but this would not in any way eliminate or take away communication as it has been on all other issues that would still take place. It just would mean that the city manager doesn't have to come back to you on every single parcel, all 39 of them, as we go through the process.
Again, I.
For a vote.
I've been involved with this project, and I can say I'm probably one of the few people around here that has been involved with this project since day zero, so I want to see this thing through, and I want to expedite, and I want to do all those other, I do want to do that, but again.
Mr. Vice Mayor, it's also quite possible that there will be property owners that will not really want it publicly known what the negotiation.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I'm not.
It would require Mr. Shipley to come back to you on very amenable, very positive, very agreeable negotiations, and this does protect the property owner's information rights.
People are missing hearing what I'm saying, I'm not really, amiable negotiations certainly need to continue, they don't need Larry, I have to be sitting there jumping in there and asking every, making sure every, you know, I's dotted and every T's crossed. It's just when we reach the point where, when we reach the point where there's an impasse, and we have to begin these things, how does this council stand involved with something that is as significant as that? I mean.
And to be honest with you, I'm not so sure that you would have any involvement. It has to follow T dot in state law, so I'm not sure where your impact would be even if we were bringing every parcel back on eminent domain, because it has to follow that process, there's steps that go, once there's an impasse, then it falls into a more legal list of tasks, and I'm not so sure that a vote either way by the council would necessarily be required, or.
Well, here's, here's kind of the way I envision this, Mr. Epps, maybe this will answer your question. The city council has the ultimate authority, okay? You're delegating that to Mr. Shipley, just like he negotiates lots of contracts, but ultimately it's your final decision. The city council, as I understand it, has approved a sum of money to acquire this right-of-way, and so he's authorized to negotiate within that sum of money to try to acquire these right-of-ways. If there's an impasse, the owner can come to the city. If there's an impasse, the owner can come to the city council meeting and complain, or I'm sure that Mr. Shipley, knowing him, like I have, for as long as I've known him, which, when I had hair on my head, he will keep the council informed every step of the way on all of this. But at any time the council wants to become involved, now, if, if the landowner accepts Mr. Hall's appraisal, or something close to that, it should never be an issue, but if there's a wide disparity, and the council, you know, wants to increase that offer, the council has the legal authority to do that, but it's really better to kind of keep those negotiations between the property owners. But ultimately, however much the city pays each property owner for each tract of land is going to be public record, okay? No ifs, ands, or buts about that. So, as long as it's within the budget that's been approved, basically, Mr. Shipley has the authority to, to negotiate, and then if a situation develops where we do have to, where the city has to exercise in the domain, I'm sure he'll keep you advised, and the reason for that, and how far the parties are apart at that process. I know we have instituted eminent domain several times, and then negotiated a settlement even after the lawsuit's been filed. So, that happens, not infrequently. So, that's kind of how it's going to work, but, but to come right back to the initial question, the city council has the ultimate authority in this transaction, for certain.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. I think that's really what I wanted to hear. I, I guess my fear was, and I've, I've been here long enough, and I've worked, I've worked with this administration long enough, to know that that, that stuff just doesn't happen. But I, again, because, because of, because of what eminent domain means to so, to so many people in the public, the citizenry out there, I, I want to make sure every, everything of this is just spelled out in such a way that everybody understands that ultimately the authority will, will, this council will have their hands involved in this process, which I felt like certainly was going to happen. And I guess I was kind of being a little bit nitpicky on the wording, because it does, it makes, it does sound like that you've got, you know, that you have a singular person that's, that's doing all that, and I understand that's the way it needs to be happening, but I want to, I just feel more comfortable knowing, hearing from legal counsel and from my administrators that, you know, that this council duly elected will be involved, will be involved in the process, especially if eminent domain has to take place.
And I, and I don't want to, I don't want to be misunderstood about this. The council has approved the path of this project-
Absolutely.
And the land that has to be acquired.
Absolutely.
So, if one property owner said, "I'm not selling, no matter what you do to me," the council would have to rescind, basically, the whole project and pick a different path to unravel that. But they had, but if they really wanted to, it's like the Teleco dam. You can cancel the project.
Don't get me wrong. Larry Epps, Larry Epps is not giving up here and doing all this yak-a-dee-yak-yak-ing, because I, I want to kill this project. The reason why I said earlier I've been involved at day zero, I, I kind of foresaw, I knew this stuff was going to come up, and I planned, and we did approve those, those right-of-ways, and I do plan to see this thing come to fruition. However, I, I want, I want the public to know, I just wanted to hear it from my administrators and mayors, I want the public to know that this council is going to, in, in case we reach, we do reach an impasse, this council, I know, I speak, maybe I should speak for myself, that Larry Epps plans on being involved in that, and making sure that people's, people's rights are protected, and they are, they will be.
They are.
But that's, that's a strong word, and maybe I shouldn't have said that. But that, we'll just be involved in this process and do what we're elected to do.
Yeah. Just one point of clarification. As far as the city council approving the right-of-way, it's all preliminary. There has been no final approval on any, any plan or design as we go forward, so I just want to make sure it's all out there, it's preliminary, everybody's seen it. The draft has been approved by T dot, the draft has been approved, but there is no final, final. Because, again, part of that is the right-of-way process, and the field review, and what Ms. Croft does, and, and all of that. So, lots of moving parts and lots of fluid opportunities is where we are, and these are progression steps as we go forward.
And ultimately, when we're looking at this, we're looking at it for the betterment of the whole, and it, I agree, you know, eminent domain makes people think that you're going to be left out on the street with nothing, but that's not at all what it means. It means that there's just a disagreement about the price, and that another party, the government, the courts, have to step in and help you negotiate to a solution. And our road can continue as that goes on.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I did know it was in the Fifth Amendment, because I teach it every year to my eighth graders.
I would have passed. When, I came across an interesting quote when I was doing this, and it's direct to the point, "The reason the government was given the right to, to a power known as eminent domain, in the first place, is because it offers a variety of benefits to the entire community, a bit at the expense of a handful of property owners." So, there are property owners that are going to sacrifice for the betterment of all of us. So, that's just-
Yeah.
That's the downside of it, but the upside is the whole community is going to benefit.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anyone else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 10. Consider Resolution 140102, expressing intent to reimburse expenditures of certain public works projects from proceeds of notes, bonds, or other indebtedness to be issued by the city. Sponsors, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor, council members, over the several years now, we've talked about various projects, and this resolution tonight expresses official intent that should certain expenditures be incurred on various public works projects in the future, and should the city issue any indebtedness for those projects down the road, that we can reimburse the city for any funds that we have advanced for any of those projects. And I would just like to point out that this resolution does not authorize any of those projects, it's just allowing us to reimburse the city should we incur expenses in advance of those projects. It also does not authorize the issuance of any bonds at this point. We would come back to the city council to authorize the issuance of any bonds for these and for those projects. To point out, some of the projects we've talked about has Bennett Road North, the right-of-way, and the construction of Bennett Road North, police station and/or city hall, or a combination of both, that's been discussed several years now, and this would be included in this intent to reimburse resolution. We also have Falling Water River Bridge potential there that we may have to make some improvements to that bridge, or at least the half that we own, so it's included in this. The total of all these projects is $14 million, and I would recommend approval, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Saucum. Questions, comments?
All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 11. Consider approval of retail development services with Retail Strategies. Sponsors, Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Oh, they're sick of seeing me tonight, that's for sure. I am happy to report, mayor and council, back in November, we sent out a request for proposals on retail development services for the city of Cookeville. We received three proposals, one from the Retail Coach, the Buxton Group, and Retail Strategies. We put together a scoring matrix, and the proposals were scored on the items that are listed there, specialized expertise, technical competence, the most important one being the, the familiarities with the scope of work and the specific retail challenges of the city of Cookeville. We're kind of a tough nut to crack, if you will. I think our market trade area is much larger than we're given credit for, and this company will be able to come in and help us pull the data and tell our story better, if you will, to future retailers. We're asking you to approve a 12-month contract with Retail Strategies for $38,000. Deliverables will include a strategic plan that will be multi-phased, to include market research, gap analysis, as well as customer demographics. Obviously, they will catalog our vacant property, which is huge within itself, so we'll be able to have that. All this information will be available to our existing development community, as they work organically and what they do best every day, as well as give us some tools to specialize, recruit towards some that we feel like fit our, our customer profile, our demographic fits the company's customer profile. Really excited about this opportunity and request your approval.
Ms. Kiefer. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
We served on a committee as far as, you know, everybody thinks about economic development, but we need retail development. I think all of us on the council have been approached when a certain store that has a corporate logo, it looks like a bullseye, is going to come to Cookeville, and it, like Melinda was saying, site locators have a hard time wrapping around their head what Cookeville is. The demographics, our market area is much larger, we have a bigger impact on more people than they believe. This company will help us sell our message, and hopefully, we will see in the near future a difference in our retail outlook. Also, the people that have current businesses will be, can use this data to improve their existing business that is here right now, so they can share this information. This is just, you know, a lot of times people think that on economic development, we're bringing an industry in to create jobs, which is what we're also doing at the same time. Retail development also creates jobs, because we are a retail hub of the Upper Cumberland. You can just look at the traffic in our city. I think the police department can tell you that we have probably an average of 50,000 to 60,000 people within our city limits on a daily basis, and it's, it's good for us. It creates sales tax that we're able to keep taxes low, so anything that we can aid our community in regards to sales tax and an improvement with citizens, I think, should be highly recommended.
Thank you. I like the idea that they will also provide the information that they, that they gather for our existing businesses too, because 80% of our new jobs come from existing businesses and industry.
Yes, ma'am.
And if everybody working together, it just, it just makes, makes Cookeville better.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, retail, right now, is one of our strong suits. Just by geographic location is a lot of it, and so we have to play to our, to our strengths right now.
Yes.
And retail operation comes in, I mean, that's, no, that may not be 200 jobs, but it's, it's probably going to be, you know, it could easily be 15 or 20 jobs that we didn't have, and create sales tax-
And plus the sales tax.
...that we didn't have, and, you know, drive people in from out of town. So, it does a lot of good things, but I think the retail side is, is one that a lot of folks overlook, and so we're trying to, like I say, play to our strengths right now. Mr. Mayor, one of the statistics I dug up a long time ago, which I don't think a lot of people know, is that 20, we, we realized 25% more in tax, in tax revenue in this city than we should, based on population size, et cetera. So, our, you can basically turn that around and say, "Our taxes are 25% lower than expected because of, because of retail sales in this, in our area, in our town." So, it goes without saying, this is a very important cog in, in our financial wheel, so looking forward to the, looking forward to this.
Also, I think you told us, another plus for this company is, there's a person in the organization that is familiar with our town-
Very.
...and our community and the area we serve, which is highly important.
And these guys also have a division within Retail Strategies that they deal, they are site selectors, basically.
They are brokers and they're representatives-
Yeah, they're brokers for retail organizations.
...within the company and other divisions. Exactly. So, they will even be able to represent us, if you will-
Right.
-in, in that capacity.
Anything else? All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Item 12. Consider approval of dump truck repair warranty. Water Quality Control Department sponsors, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we recently had a failure on one of our engines on a dump truck. Went out and got proposals, estimates on repairs, have two proposals. A Walker diesel was the low estimate at $16,937. Would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Saucum. Questions, comments?
Mr. Kelly, would you tell us what it would cost to replace that dump truck?
There are $85,000 new. We looked at taking it out of service and putting that money into a new one, but we felt like this one was good enough shape to rebuild, get another engine in it, put in it, and keep using it.
How much more time do you think you'll get out of it with the new engine?
We step it down, so it'll get stepped down once it gets to a certain point, and we may, it may go to the wastewater plant, so it could last another 20 years, depend, you know, depends on how it's used.
Yeah.
You can give it leisure services if it's really bad.
That's after 20 years.
It's 20 years.
Easy, Rick, right? Right. Anything else? All right, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item 13. Consider awarding bid for transformers. Sponsors, Electric Department. Mr. Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, we solicited bids on 75 KVA transformers. Had several bidders, evaluated those, and I'd recommend for your approval border states as the low-evaluated bidder, meeting specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Saucum. Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. All right. This is the portion of the meeting where we hear from officers, councilmen, and the city manager. Everybody might want to get comfortable. Item 14. Hold a public hearing on the annual progress report on the plan of services for several annexation areas.
It's that time of year again.
Not feel all right to say that?
That's fine, because I'll go through them. I'll try to be brief, no more than an hour or so. Since 1998, we've been required to do an annual report on the plan of services, specifying how we're doing on each of the areas we've annexed since 1998. There are 18 areas that we've annexed since then. We have 11 of those for which we still have services to be completed, and I'll briefly go through these, and they're depicted on the screen. The first is the Old Sparta Road, Horace Lewis Road area. The only service remaining in there to be provided is sewer. The plan of services provided, specified that had to be provided within 15 years, that works out till June of next year. An engineering design contract has been signed to design the sewer improvements for this area. Sewer is also the only service remaining to be provided in the Old Ridge Road, Falling Water River area. That plan of services does not give a specific date for it to be completed, but it is being included, at least a portion of it, in the engineering design contract for the Old Sparta Lewis, Old Sparta Road and Horace Lewis Road area. Within the Buck Mountain Dry Valley Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sanitary sewer and electric service. The plan of services does not give a specific date for the completion of sewer. It does specify that electrical service will be provided within three years after the city acquires the service area. All but 10 customers have been provided electrical service in this area. In the East Highway 70 Interstate 40 area, all services have been provided, with the exception of water service and sanitary sewer. The plan of services specifies that water service improvements will be completed within 15 years, and there is no specific date for sewer. What remains is one additional fire hydrant, and we've completed two phases of sewer installation, which serves approximately 165 parcels. Within the West Cookeville Interstate 40 area, services remaining to be completed include water service, sanitary sewer, street lighting, electrical service, and natural gas. The plan of services specifies that water service will be provided within five years after the city acquires the service areas. Sanitary sewer, there's no specific date given for that. It's based on the same criteria we would use for other properties within the city. Street lighting, electrical service within one year after the effective date, and natural gas provided to the area north of I-40 within five years after the effective date, and to the portion south of I-40 when the level of development economically justifies installation. Existing natural gas customers have had their rates reduced. Electrical service and street lighting's been provided to approximately 95% of the area, and the installation of water and sewer service in the Highlands Business Park is underway and was completed, or, excuse me, was completed this year, or in 2013. Also, we have begun out an evaluation over the acquisition of the water service area, which this is within the Double Springs Water Service area. Then the Shagrag Road area, all the services have been provided except for sewer. There is no specific date given in the plan of services for completing sewer in this area. In the Rebecca Hill, Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, all services provided except sewer. The plan of services for this area specifies sewer will be provided within 20 years. This area was annexed in 2007, so that gives us till 2027. The Bunker Hill Road, Love Lady Road area, which is contiguous to the Rebecca Place, Bunker Hill Road area, all services have been provided, with the exception of sewer and gas. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided within 20 years, and again, this was annexed in 2007, so that's 2027. Natural gas has been provided to 14 customers. In the Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided- In the Free Hill Road area, all services have been provided with the exception of sewer. The plan of services specifies that it will be provided within 25 years. It was annexed in 2009, so that's 2034, the cutoff date for that. South Willow Avenue area, which was annexed just a couple of years ago, all services have been provided with the exception of sewer service and street lights. The sewers will be provided based on the same criteria as we use for unserved areas already within the city limits, and the Electric Department has just received approval from T-Dot for the completion of the installation of street lighting, which is expected to be within two months from tonight. Finally, the last area, almost recently annexed area, is the Bennett Road area, and it's only been a year, and there are several things that still need to be completed. Water service rates, water service, sanitary sewer, street lighting, and natural gas still, some things still need to be completed. We have begun negotiations with the Double Springs Utility District for acquisition of the service area, or have begun an evaluation about the acquisition of that, which would go towards the provision of the water service. The plan of services specifies that sewer will be provided based on the same criteria we use for other unserved areas within the city. Those customers that have, already have natural gas have had their rates reduced. There's one area that remains to have natural gas provided, that's along Reser Lane. That will be extended based upon customer demand and when economically feasible. We have agreed, or, the plan of services specifies that we will pay the co-op, the electric co-op, for the provision of street lighting, and to date, 43 of 106 planned lights have been installed. The plans are currently being developed for the installation of the remaining lights. So, that is our annual report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try and address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mills.
There is the same.
Anybody?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, this is the portion where we open the floor. If anyone would like to come forward, we just ask that you state your name. Give it three minutes, that would be great if you, the microphone so everybody could hear you, that'd be great.
I have to warn you before I speak that I don't hear well, so if you will speak loud to me, I'd appreciate it. My name is Dot LaFever, and I live at 1247 Skyline Drive. I won't, our property line borders the line of the Rock Quarry, and I won't go into all the detail. We all heard and heard, we know what it's about. But in their efforts to expand, it has become just a nightmare because they are coming closer, they are making, of course, more noise, much more of that poisonous air that we all know has been coming through. We have our, we've had it all, you know, surveyed and checked, and it just makes it come through more forcefully. And so, what I'm here tonight to try to ask you to do is to be sure and search your hearts before you make a decision. Be sure and have them to stay that 150 feet away from us, because I'm finding out that, well, actually, again, this afternoon, I learned more, and yesterday, I learned some more. They've built a road behind us completely, behind my house, all the way up to Doug Hudgens'. What they've also done, they have had a, I don't know what you call it, a huge piece of equipment up there, like a, that you dig with, and you could even see him as he came over the hill. He has dug within 70 or 80 feet, because they have told me that they can come 70 feet if they want to, but they probably wouldn't come more than 80 feet. So, they have done this, and they are just belligerently going on, and we have not been able to do anything about it. My neighbor told me today that they had pushed trees that have fallen in her yard, and that was what was so frightening the other day. They were up there with this piece of equipment, and they were bulldozing these trees, and maybe some of the trees were 125 feet. And if they were going to come 70 feet, our safety was just ruined, because what would they do with that other 75-foot of tree if they hit it and it fell on us? And we, we were there, and that was all we could do. And so, what I am trying to say is, if 150 feet, even that far, if you make, if you hold them to that, it says that they can't come to within that, you know, that perimeter. Well, that doesn't say that they can't come to with an axe, or with a bulldozer, or with whatever. It says they can't come into that area, within that distance from our house. And that's part of my plea, is to enforce that. We, I know you all have the power to do it, and it can be done right here, and so that's why that I've come to you all for some help. And another thing, my husband is 83 years old, he's lived up there 42 years. They've known all along, and this is not being mean, they've known all along how sick he was, but they just relentlessly go on and on, and all he's asking is that he can live there in peace for the rest of his life. He's getting weaker all the time. And I can't help but feel like that's not asking too much, just for him to live in peace for the rest of his life. And I know it seems like they're zeroing in on our little odds, and with all those hundreds of acres, I think maybe they could go somewhere and give us a little time. So, the only thing that I'm saying is not to be hateful about it, is that only if God is willing, we will be there, and I'll be there standing beside him for as long as he lives. And I know you all, search your heart and do what's right about it. And that's all, and if you have anything to say back, I can barely hear you, so just bear that.
Ms. LaFever, we will, we will check on the buffer zone. I don't know off the top of my head, anything really about the distance in the buffer zone without having to look it up, but we will, we will look it up and make sure, you know, if there is a buffer zone that they have to, that they do abide by.
Well, because what they're doing, they're just doing it all so fast, all at once, and once it's done, it can't be undone. That's why we're here in such a pressure to get it done before they just keep on.
Mr. Mayor, several of us are going out there in the morning at 10 o'clock.
Okay. Did you hear that, Ms. LaFever?
No.
Okay, several of us are going out there in the morning at 10 o'clock. We're supposed to be there in the morn-
I appreciate that so much, because this is really, really, really important.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will look into it.
I appreciate it so much.
Please feel free to come anytime and express any concerns.
Well, if you want to, go up my driveway, or you can go up Doug's, it doesn't matter which way, but thanks, I do appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got it on vibrate, I'm sorry, it rained a while ago.
Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Judy Butler, and I live on Skyline. And Mr. LaFever and Dot both have been debating this, we all have for about 10 years, and we were told that there wasn't anything that could be done, but then there are a minimum yard requirements in Section 236.5, says no part of the quarry mining operation shall be located any closer than 150 feet from any residential property. And also, there was supposed to be property zoning, and we've asked for this over and over, of a buffer yard, a minimum within 100 feet. And, you know, I know most of your, I drive around and I see a lot of your rock quarries, and there's not a lot of residential areas at rock quarries, and I know this one was grandfathered in. I have that understanding, and I know that Cookeville limestone bought it, and I know that they just blasted deliveries, destroyed their homes, and then they sold it, now to Rogers now. You feel like they took their money and ran, as far as a resident, you know what I mean? You can put it on paper, but you can't stop our thinking, but anyway, I feel like that the city can do something. We were told that they could not, but there are laws that keep them from doing this. I know they're state laws, but the city, you know, we're the people, and we want your cooperation and your help in trying to reserve what we've worked hard for our children all of our life, we don't want to destroy it. And I'm in retirement age, and I understand what Dot and Al are saying, and my husband's passed away, he was a veteran, and I feel like that, you know, that our council's here for us, the people of Cookeville, and I appreciate your interest in listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I feel like we're infamous, but I'll still introduce myself. I'm Mark Grimes, and my dad, Jim Grimes, and Pat Grimes, we're, we own the property that borders a proposed Bennett Road and Highway 70. It's running through our five-generation farm, and also, we adjoin the property at Kenny's Auto Salvage. But I just wanted to start off by saying, thank you to the council for having our pain and moving the road 50% on our neighbor, and, you know, we really appreciate that, and, you know, we're not trying to be unreasonable, we just, you know, 50% on us, 50% on them, but we do appreciate that. If it's all right, I was going to talk a little bit, we got the soil sample today, and I'm just going to go a little bit, and then quickly circle back around to eminent domain. Today, we received a soft copy of the soil sample from the Phase 2 investigation between Track 23, which is Kenny's Auto Salvage, and Track 24, which is our farm. Stick with me here, this is probably a bit of a boring part, but they tested various elements, including RCA metals, volatile organic compounds, semivolatile organic compounds, oil and grease and pH levels, at 15 different sites on our property and the salvage yard, for a total of 485 possible test results, and only four results were above the EPA regional screening levels, three of which were arsenic, which nationally occurs, and is not necessarily indicative of contamination. So, given these results, we do not see any impediments to solidifying the current right-of-way proposal, which is shared 50/50 between ourselves and the auto salvage yard, 80 feet on us and 80 feet on them, and we appreciate the council's continued efforts to make this possible. And just to switch gears if I can to eminent domain, just a general for other property owners out there, and to, just to add, if that's all right, to Mr. Woodford's conversation earlier, it's the, sorry, I gave my smartphone here, but it's the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, and it's also Article 1, Section 21 of the Tennessee Constitution, which, you know, gives you the right for eminent domain. But basically, another thing, I guess I wanted to make people aware of, you don't necessarily have to litigate. Tennessee has something called an alternate dispute resolution, which makes mediation and, cap gun blanking the other ones, but arbitration. I think there's a couple other options available for landowners if they're having trouble coming to, you know, the correct price between the city and yourselves. And the other thing is, a couple of concepts, something called HBU, which is highest and best use. So, basically, your property should be valued at your highest and best use, whether that's residential, agriculture, or commercial, depending on your surrounding area. And there's also something called before and after value, so whatever your property is valued at before the construction of the road, and then you're supposed to extract out the value of your property afterwards, and that's where you come up with a fair evaluation. And last point, you're, as most people, our properties only be partially taken, as I'm sure most people in the, in the road will be as well. But basically, you are entitled to incidental damages if it's a partial take, per Tennessee Code annotated 29-16-114 and 29-17-910. Basically, just states incidental damages are property, or properly, sorry, measured by the decline in the fair market value of the remainder of the property by the virtue of the taking. So, in other words, if your property value has decreased because of the road came through, that's also, you're entitled to that as far as the negotiation and the money being settled between you and the council. So, anyway, but again, thanks for, thanks for your help in helping us get it halfway moved, so, thank you.
Mr. Grimes, thank you, and I appreciate all the homework you've done. Me and the vice mayor up here writing down notes the whole time, we're like, oh, okay.
Just put you in Google on your goods.
Yeah. But, you know, we promise, we're going to try to work as fair and evenly with everybody out there, and so.
I was just saying one thing, after doing my research, I did, it is something like less than 10% are actually, eminent domain is actually utilized, that somewhere between 80 and 90%, they actually come to terms, so.
Yeah.
That made me feel a lot better. And another thing, some people actually want to be condemned for tax purposes, you can actually have a capital gains exclusion, so a lot of those fall under that, and also clear title, but anyway, long story short, that gave me heart that, you know, people can come to, you know, most of the time, they come to the great.
Right, right, and we plan to do everything we can to do that, so. But thank you. Anyone else? All right, anything from the council? The announcement? All right, this meeting's adjourned.